So we can be called to order at 7:04 PM. For the minutes, Janie.
Got it.
And then the first item up on the agenda is any additions to the agenda this evening? As are there any items that anyone would like to add to the agenda?
Yes, Eric, I would like to add something to the beginning of our meeting if you can yield some time for that.
Certainly. We'll need something for the minutes as to exactly what it is.
Actually, a resolution of thanks for Eric to Eric Bailey.
Okay. So we'll add that. Do you want that at the start of the or do you want that under new business?
No, no, we'll do it right now.
If you're sorry. Okay. All right. It's fine with me.
So, thank you all for trying to see who all is here tonight. All right. All right, so I would like to first, I want to thank Martha for helping prepare this beautiful resolution to of thanks to Eric. So, without further ado, whereas Eric Bailey joined the Lake Bluff Library staff in August 2005 and was head of technical services. And whereas Mr. Bailey was promoted to the library director in January 2012. And whereas Mr. Bailey at the time at that in his time at the library has held initiated and facilitated substantial improvements to the library services, including passport services and intergovernmental agreement, card agreement with local school districts, license plate renewals, elimination of overdue fines, the expansion of physical and digital collections, and the construction of the Stro reading room. And whereas Mr. Bailey has worked diligently to expand and grow library presence in the community, transforming the library from Lake Bluff's wallflower to a vibrant organization that actively participates in community events and initiatives. And whereas Mr. Bailey has approached a wide variety of challenges, including a global pandemic with determination, grit, and steadfast resolve to provide the community with the best library service possible. And whereas Mr. Bailey has built a culture of trust, teamwork, and collaboration among library staff through effective coaching, hiring, and a metric ton of patience and good humor. And whereas Mr. Bailey has been a responsible and meticulous steward of taxpayer dollars and consistently delivered balanced and transparent budgets. Budgets. And whereas Mr. Bailey has wholeheartedly and enthusiastically embraced all aspects of his job, from high-level tasks like strategic planning and budgeting to routine issues like covering the front of the reference desk and even the unglamorous work of fixing toilets and vanquishing cobwebs. And whereas Mr. Bailey's work has positioned the Lake Bluff Public Library for a better and brighter future. And whereas Mr. Bailey has charged his responsibilities faithfully and has exemplified the spirit of community and service that is central to Lake Bluff. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the Lake Bluff Library trustees as follows. The Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks Eric Bailey for over 17 years of service to the Lake Bluff community. And the board hereby provides Mr. Bailey with a signed copy of this resolution and a certificate of thanks. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move. Oh, second.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think, please, JD, if you'll note, this is unanimous with one absence. I believe Matt is not here unless I can listen somewhere, miss him somewhere. In addition, Eric, we have. We say thank you to you for exemplifying excellence in library services, team-building leadership, and responsible stewardship of the public funds. Lake Bluff Public Library offers thanks to Eric Bailey, July 19, 2022. But thank you, Eric. Congratulations, and we wish you the very, very best.
You're here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a lot. I am going to miss everyone here a great deal. I've learned so much over the years from everyone who served on the Board of Trustees and all of the different staff members that I've worked with. So it's. It's sad to, you know, move on, you know, even knowing full well that it's a good opportunity and where I need to be. But still sad that I can't take y'all with me.
Eric, I remember five.
You should consider moving. It's beautiful up there.
I remember five or six years ago, Scott Butler sat down during one of your reviews and talked about your long-term goals. And he said rather wistfully that someday you and your family would like to be in your, one of your hometown communities, and you'd love to be working at the local library. So not everybody gets their dream come true. So I'm really happy for you. We all are. We will miss you. We wish you the best, and I'm sure we'll cross paths and, you know, you'll be back and forth, and we'll always stay in touch. And we'll probably be calling shortly and saying, help.
And I'll be picking up. I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions that come up. Please, 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 you know, if there's something I can help, but let me know.
Thank you so much.
Been doing a lot of work getting things ready for the transition. The, you know, leaving the library in good shape is very important to me. And I think that's pretty confident that that's where we're going to be. Doing a lot of documentation, but, you know, we've got a great staff. Fantastic group of individuals who are absolutely going to keep us headed towards a brighter and better things.
Shall we return to the agenda?
Kathy, you said you had a second thing to add.
It was the certificate of thanks, which I read.
Oh, okay, okay.
For you, yeah, we have the resolution and then a certificate of thanks.
Right. So next item on the agenda would be opportunity for the public to address the board. Do we have any members of the public slash staff this evening who would like to address the board? Okay, not seeing anybody jumping in with hands raised. We'll move on to the fourth item on our agenda, which is the minutes of the June 21, 2022 board meeting. Janie, when you were writing those, you'd asked me about. About the, clarify, who were the committee chairs? And I didn't have that information to hand. I don't think it's necessary for the document, but well, maybe when we get to committees, we could clarify those as we go through them so that we can. I didn't want to guess on any of them.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I have notes from the May meeting, I think, while the May meeting, wait, June, we came back from committees and said, here are the chairpersons. So I might have them as well if needed.
Any questions, comments about the about the minutes? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And second?
Second?
All right, motion from John, second from Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed. That's our approved. Excellent work as always, Janie. All right, and that is going to take us up to the financial reports. So the financial reports. I had a bit of a challenge this month because we switched over to a new dual authentication system where logging into BSNA now requires an approval that goes through a mobile device. So for those of us that have dedicated BSNA accounts, Martha Laurent and I, we had this all set up two weeks ago through our mobile phones, and then the next week, my phone promptly died. So I had to spend a few days trying to get Anthony, who's the village tech person's attention, to get things squared away so that I could work with the new phone. Once I had got that, got it set up. So I did not get that finalized until today, hence the delay on these reports. But let's see here. Sure I'm on the right one. Can you see the, did the tab change when I changed it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good, because I'm not always sure that it, whether it's going to do that or not. Zoom does not seem to be always as consistent as I would like it to be.
And Eric, can you enlarge it for us, please?
Absolutely. Is that okay? Bigger?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, starting at the top, first item to draw attention to is the big bunch of property tax revenue that we received, our first big bunch. There'll be another big bunch that'll show up in the reports next month. So that is always good to see things rolling in. We are a little bit lower than we were this month last year. I think we're getting past some of the unsettled space with the COVID pandemic. I mean, the COVID is still happening, but kind of everything is kind of settling into this new normal. So next item I want to draw attention to is the passport fees. We're off to a very good start already this fiscal year on passport fees. We have thus far this fiscal year taken in $3,734. A lot of that in May since this past month was a little bit slower. Often the case with the summer months, June and July in particular, they usually are when people are planning to travel, not when they are planning to take trips. So that is good news because besides being obviously quite a bit higher than the last year when we finished with $20,000, it puts us already at almost a quarter of the revenue that we had that we had budgeted to receive this year. So we're already well ahead of schedule. So that looks to continue to be a strong revenue source for the library, which is great. Moving down to my next item here, which is interest earnings, $374 this month as opposed to the six bucks we got last, this month last year. So a little bit better. Better enough that we in one month, in two months, have really blasted past the the basement number that we had set for the budget. So we'd only, since revenue, since interest earnings had been so low, we'd only had that set at $250. That had been about all we had gotten the last couple fiscal years, but we've already shot past that, which is.
Eric, is that for the same amount of principal? Essentially?
Um, yeah. Same neighborhood, yeah. It's not, it's not enough more to make that kind of a difference.
Right, right.
You know, I think it's $40,000 more on top of the 350 or so, you know, plus whatever is just kind of sitting in there.
Yeah, that's good.
Until we use it.
Okay, thanks.
No, it's a good thing. Moving down to the the budget portion here, the expenditures. Barely standard month overall. Computer services that relates to our quarterly CBI payment. You know, good amount of programming expenses as you would expect during the middle of the summer. And at the bottom line, we are scroll into the bottom here. We are at 21% expended, which is a pretty solid number for about where we would want to be. And in particular, that's a good good place to be because as we'll, as we'll see in a moment when we get to the, to the checks and looking through some of those. A big chunk of the difference between this year and last year is this number right here. The 19,000 in use of donations. That is, those are revenues that are for the Stro reading room. Started receiving the invoices for those, processing them. The, the check has not been processed from the foundation for those yet. So when you look at the 2235 versus the 207, you know, keep in mind, there's about 20,000 of that, that is, you know, just waiting to be reimbursed, basically.
Hey, Eric, a quick question. Has anyone from the friends been in to see the renovated space as it stands today?
You know, I, I would imagine that there's friends that have taken a peek. There aren't any that I have talked to about it. So I don't know if any of the other staff present have talked to any of the friends at the desk about them. Going to take that as a no.
Okay, thank you.
But I am sure that they'll love it. There's a lot of thought and care that went into that. And a lot of it was Cal's attention to detail as well. So that being the case, who would risk being haunted? And suggesting that, you know, the casework was a bad call in terms of the finish. Okay, so those are all the points that I've got for the financial reports. Are there any questions on any of the other lines in the financial reports? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
My second.
All right, motion from John, second from Kathy. As it's money, we will do a roll called vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzel.
Aye.
Trustee Church. Jenny, you're muted.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
All right, financial documents are approved. And that will take us over to, let's see, our next item, which is the checks. Couple items to draw attention to in the month just passed. Renewal of the Chicago Tribune continues to be one of our core, most essential periodicals that we carry here at the library. As I'd mentioned, looking at the financials, the $3,500, the quarterly payment to computer view for overseeing the local area network. Basically, our computer, our entire computer setup. And then one of the big items here besides the payment to SMC, since a bunch of the as our contracts manager for the project, a lot of the payment is going through SMC. One that isn't is through Krieger International, which you probably would see on an invoice as KI. That's where the door is coming from, the glass door for the Stro room. Okay, and last item, items that I'll draw attention to here, a little bit of an extra charge this month to Murphy and Miller. We had a couple, couple items that we called Murphy and Miller out to help us deal with. Some of it was covered by our maintenance agreement. Some of it was not. Chiefly, in the last couple months, the big issue that we've been running into is some air conditioner issues. The air conditioner for the museum building was low on low on Freon and needed to be topped off, and the leak that was causing it to be low needed to be patched up. And then at the same time, we've been having some electrical trouble with the library's main AC unit that it has developed the unfortunate habit to overheat on hot days. And when it overheats, it stops working and the library staff begins to overheat. And that, that obviously is a suboptimal outcome. You would like the AC to be working hard on the days when it is hot, it's not taking a break. So I think we've just about gotten that fixed. The AC's been some adjustments were made, and it seems to have been doing better during the recent hot days this week.
Eric, one question about that. I, I was under the impression that you could not use Freon anymore. That if, if an existing unit that was using Freon was low, you couldn't top it off. I, I thought it was outlawed as a rule.
I can ask.
So. I don't think.
Maybe I'm using the wrong, maybe I'm using the wrong term.
Yeah, I don't think you're using Freon anymore. There's a new product. I think we actually had this question once before, else maybe we did hear.
Yeah, I think so, too.
It's, it's whatever refrigerant.
Okay.
Material needs to go in there and circle through on a closed loop.
Okay.
So presumably not Freon, since that's on super illegal. So, okay.
So Eric, could I?
Question on that, yes.
Could you go back up so I could get the check numbers?
Oh, yes.
15271.
Yep, so we've got 15258. 15259 is a void, then it's 15260. Down to 15290.
Okay, thank you.
And thanks, a quick thanks as always to Laurent. She puts a lot of work into pulling all these payments and invoices together each month.
Eric, I've got just a question. If it gets too lengthy, we could talk about it another time. But the 8100, $8,159 for the door, that's the door to the Stro room, is that correct?
That's correct.
So has that been? So is that been, that has been paid by the library?
It is in a pile of checks waiting to go out after their approval this meeting.
But so then that has, that will be reimbursed by the foundation, is that correct? Because the donation is, yeah, okay.
Yes.
So are there several of those earlier payments in the, around the room? At this point?
Um, there are a couple that I believe are going out this year. Here's the other big one. A lot of the payments are happening through SMC.
Yeah, did you say it was about?
There is.
19,000, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. The other chunk of that is the 10,000 here to SMC. So those are the two big ones. They're, they're kind of the the first that are going through as the non they're, they're not for the overseeing the project, they're not for, you know, putting the project together, which were expenses that the library had agreed to cover. They're, they're for the actual construction themselves.
Those are the first two. Services run for construction. And you and I need to talk about that and get those monies moved around.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Other check questions? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve.
A second.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Janie, it's funny.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then Bill seconded. All right, another vote involving involving cash, so we'll do another roll called vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzel.
Aye. Aye.
All right, checks are approved. And that is going to take us up to our committee reports. So we had two committees that met this month. Those were Building and Grounds and Human Resources. Building and Grounds, Janie, I believe you're the, still the chair there.
I am, and yes, I always forget to think about this until about, till we get to this part of the agenda. But we did meet and actually picked out our final fabric choices and furniture choices and talked about getting those underway. And I don't necessarily remember if there was anything else we discussed. I haven't written up those minutes yet, so.
Well, we discussed one of the items that we'll be getting to later in the meeting, which is the CRS study.
Okay. That's right.
Which we voted, I believe that we, the committee approved to recommend to the board. Yeah.
So it's on the agenda tonight to go with that recommendation.
Thank you, Kathy.
If Jenny doesn't have anything to add, then I believe next up would be Jenny Graziano, our HR chair.
Um, hi. Yes, we met last week. Kathy attended our meeting as well. And so we talked about procedures and events that are going to be taking place in preparation for Eric leaving and after he leaves. So some of the things that we've been working on are drafting the job posting as well as exit interviews and interview questions for candidates. And I think that was mainly what we talked about. Am I missing anything, Kathy or Janie or Bonnie?
I'm just that we do have some content to go into executive session tonight as a result of the HR committee meeting. Just a heads up for everybody.
That'll be our first item under new business. Okay. Good summary. I'm going to run through the committee reports here. Yeah.
One other thing, and I want to say.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I want to say thank you to Martha, too. She has been a huge help in helping us with all of the items that we've been working on. So she has been crucial, and thank you, Eric, for all of your patience.
Yeah, I second that. I'm sure everybody who are on top of all the normal things that one does in a work week. This is Martha's first week back after maternity leave, and she did, she, she just did double time left and right, so we're terribly.
Yes, thanks, Martha, and welcome. We're so happy to have you back.
Thank you, and I'm happy to help and, you know, just let me know what you need and I'll do what I can.
Thank you. You've been so helpful.
Yeah, sure.
All right. So for the other committees that did not meet, I want to at least make sure that I've got the chairs recorded correctly here. Jenny, you were also chair of the Community Engagement Committee, correct? Outreach?
Yeah, yes. Did we, do we meet this? I thought we were.
Oh, you didn't meet this month. I'm just confirming that you're the.
Oh, yes.
So that it's, so that it's correct in the minutes.
Oh, perfect.
Because Jenny and I want to be sure that we've got that down, right?
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Bill, I've got you down as the chair for finance. We'll have to sort out the chair for intergovernmentals since that probably won't hold past the end of the month. Long-range planning committee.
It's me.
I thought it might be, but I kind of blanked on that one. Thank you, John. How could I forget you, John? I thought it might be, but I kind of blanked on that one. Thank you, John. How could I forget you, John? And technology committee, I believe, is still bad.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Jenny, you get all that?
Yep, sure did. Thank you, everybody.
All right. For any of those committees, is there anything that anybody wants to chime in and add for the committees that did not meet this this month? Okay, now hearing anything, I'll move this along then to new business. First item I have on the agenda is interim director and hiring discussion.
Eric, I was perhaps we should. That has to go into executive sessions. Perhaps we could defer that until the end of the meeting. Okay, then we'll move on.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So then that'll take us to the intergovernmental agreement with school district sixty-five. This continues to be a vitally important agreement that provides school cards. Provides kids resident in unincorporated Lake Bluff with school cards and guarantees them access to the library and its many excellent resources continues to be a very well-used program. So the school board will be approving on their side for district sixty-five and at their August meeting. And as always, we need to do an approval here on the library side as well for the school year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Eric, the only thing I saw on there is that it's under secretary. It still had Janie in there as opposed to Bonnie. I don't know if that's for both of those district sixty-five and one fifteen.
Well, Jenny is the secretary again.
Okay. Sorry, my bad.
It's okay.
No worries.
Sorry, Jamie.
They they did swapsies in May.
You know, I think it's when my, I couldn't get my camera and microphone going. I may, I think I missed those.
No worries. Okay, any other questions regarding the D sixty-five agreement?
So other than the principals involved, who will be signing, everything else is pretty much the same, or should I even say identical to what the prior agreements have been?
Yep.
Yeah, so.
President, the secretary will sign off on it at our end. I'll have two copies out for you to sign, and then we'll send those over to the school district. So that they can sign once they've got their approval done.
Well, if you're looking for a motion, I will move that we. Approve these intergovernmental agreements with both school districts for another.
There's, we should, we should vote on them one or two go.
Okay, so I will, I I will start with the district sixty-five. I will move that we. We accept or we whatever, what what's my word here, that we move forward with the intergovernmental agreement with school district sixty-five for another year.
Approve the agreement, intergovernmental agreement with school district sixty-five for school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion from Jenny, second from John. Since these are legally binding contracts. We'll do a quick roll call vote. Kathy, are you okay?
Yes, I'm very sorry. We're having, we're having a puppy breakdown. We're fine though.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, and I, I please, I.
Okay. And trustee Heinzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trusty Hayes.
Hi.
Trusty Graziano.
Hi.
Trusty Shaw.
Hi.
All right, they are approved. That is approved, and then that takes us to the agreement with district one fifteen or other agreement here. For which, unless there are any questions, I would look for a motion to approve.
I still move.
I'll second.
Motion from Janie, second from Bonnie. Trusty Heinzelman.
Hi.
Trusty Church.
Hi.
Trusty Shaw.
Hi.
Trusty Hayes.
Hi.
Trusty Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trusty Graziano.
Hi.
All right, second agreement is approved. And that will take us up on the list of new business to the programming summary for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. As prepared for us by Anna with some help from other staff members. We have a group of staff here who are with us tonight, who are going to present us, give us a quick presentation on the information that they have compiled. Anna, would you like me to switch over so that you can share?
Sorry, had the wheel of doom for a minute there, and I was a little concerned. Actually, Eric, if you would just go ahead and share the board packet, I've got a printout of the, what I'm talking about.
Sounds good.
So. This report is going to be a little different than what you guys saw from us last year and very different from what we've done historically, because as we have. Both adapted to COVID and also just generally moved towards more cross-age group programming. It's essentially made it very difficult to split the programs into an adult report and a youth report because there's so much that is intertwined or applicable. So what we've done is we've made one master report and we've labeled for you what the target audience of the program was and which budget line we paid for it from or budget lines in the case of somewhere we were sharing costs. So Eric, if you would go ahead and head down to the actual report, so as I'm talking, I have an idea of what this is going to look like. Our main goals for this year, this last fiscal year, were to continue adopting the pandemic, of course, which we did with continuing to develop our hybrid programming, maintaining our Zoom programming, trying some new things for Zoom programming as well as really.
Anna, is this the right part of the report to be in?
That's great, yeah.
That's great.
Yep. Bonnie asked in the chat if you could zoom in a little too.
Oh, yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So yes, you can kind of see what I'm talking about here. We're like with the grabbing your crafts, the audience was children. It was paid by juvenile programming. But then some of the all ages programming is paid by outreach. Some of it you'll see are split with juvenile and adult or teen and adult programming. So as I was saying, the other big thing we've been doing is really trying to gauge our audience for what their interest is now, because that seems to have shifted somewhat after the closures for the pandemic. And we're finding that we get much better crowds for more hands-on engaging programs rather than lectures. We do still have an interest there for the lectures, but we've stepped up our. What in my mind is more of a, let me come do something at the library rather than let me come listen to something type of program. We've also been working really hard on introducing more of those all ages and crossover programs, both to help combine resources and also just provide more variety for our patrons. There's a lot of programs that maybe were designed for adults but have appeal to children or vice versa. So what I summarized for you in the document is essentially what we found worked and didn't work with the all ages and crossover programs. We were most successful when we did share resources. So Eliza and I have been planning for adult and teen crafts. We've been doing the same craft, so we can buy in bulk the supplies for both. We only have to learn how to do the one craft. We only have to run the one craft, and it's helped a lot with leftover supplies because we don't have the space to store oodles of leftover craft supplies from every event. We've also found that offering those all ages crafts has been very popular, both with the kids and with adults. We've all, we've seen that sometimes the adults we're getting are the parents of the kids attending, and that's great. We're also getting independent adults who, when I've spoken to them, are very happy to be in an environment with children again, because, you know, it's great to see how creative they can get with some of the crafts. I personally have seen, you know, I'll make the example, and I'm like, okay, this took like twenty minutes. It'll be fine. And then they get so creative with it that it's forty minutes later and they aren't done. Oh, okay, this is great. I never would have thought of half the things they come up with. We've continued doing the outreach all ages events, and if you have questions on those, I'm sure Jill can chime in, but they've been a big hit. Having a library presence at some of these community events has been a big game changer, and we get a lot of comments of, oh, wait, you you mean this craft is free? We can, we can just come do this. Who are you and how do you do this? We're the library. Come find us, you know, down the street. Trivia Nights came back this year, did great, continue to be a great. Crowd draw and draw people that we don't often get at the other library programs we do, so that's really nice to have a wider audience for those. Hybrid events have been decently well-attended. I've been surprised a little bit at how much we continue to see both people on Zoom and in person, but they are quite exhausting. The technology setup for them is extensive, and pretty much every single hybrid program, there's been a different issue with some part of the technology. Not for lack of testing ahead of time, I can say, but. It's a lot, so we have, I have decided we're dialing those back. We're going to be doing. I'm planning ahead to prioritize the most important events for hybrid and do fewer of those because they are. A lot for me to do. But that was a good lesson learned. Eliza, do you want to chime in on teens and children? Baby?
Eliza?
I think she's having computer program problems.
Okay, no worries. I will jump ahead to the.
And, uh, sorry.
You there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
We, we. Sorry, did you hear any of my first statement?
No.
Okay, great. Um, so yeah, being out in the community has been really good in terms of engagement and in terms of numbers, so that's definitely something that we're going to keep continuing. Getting to the preschool for storytime, getting to the middle school for crafts have both been really successful programs, so that's going to keep going. And we're seeing a change in when certain age groups are at the library, so we're trying to adjust accordingly, preschool age groups, for example. We would typically have a morning storytime, but it seems like more of our preschool age kids are actually in preschool during the morning, so we've shifted to offering afternoon storytimes and have seen slightly better results from that. So I think some of this stuff is just going to be shifting for a couple of years as we. Get to a life past the pandemic, and we're just going to have to keep an eye on where people need us and try and meet that.
Okay, great. Things we found didn't work were primarily programs. We tried a couple all ages storytelling, thinking that would be a really fun, you know, library oriented thing, and pretty much no one came. Part of that may have been poor timing because one of them ended up being the last day of school, and we didn't know that when we picked it. But we're, we're moving on to other stuff that's working. We've also seen that some of the events that were for adults and we tried to open up to teens, we didn't get any teens at, so that's just not where the interest is right now. The multi-library Zoom presentations were a really great thing to see happen for libraries. And we were very excited to try them because they're opportunities to talk with authors that we would never be able to afford on our own. Unfortunately, the patron demand for Lake Bluff just wasn't there. On average, we had about three people attend any one of those events, which just wasn't enough to keep them going, especially because there's been a lot of coordination problems, getting the information from them in time to even get the event advertised in our newsletter has been pretty hit or miss. So we're going to move on from those for now, but if we see something that comes up that we think will really be a drive, like if it was a local, an author who was from Lake Bluff, you know, maybe we'll try to jump in on that. The other thing, the reading and equity, reading for equity and diversity book club ran for, Jill can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe. Just over a year, we had four or five sessions of that. I don't remember which, and almost never drew a crowd. The only one that we got people to come to was on Gender Queer when there was a huge controversy happening at the high school. That was a really good discussion, but unfortunately, the people that came to that did not come to the next one. So we're discontinuing it for the time being, and if we think there's an audience in the future, maybe we'll bring it back. That's all I got. So if Eliza has no further comments, then we're open to questions.
I have a question, Anna. Thank you and Eliza for for your summary. I think there's some good key learnings. I like the way you guys structured the report, you know, here were the events and the key takeaways. Um, when I flipped through it, I did notice that one of the multiple library programs, the one with Nick Offer, I think his name is Nick Offerman, he's an actor, he wrote a book. That the attendance number was off the charts. I, so my, I have a question to clarify what the attendance number is. If it's a multiply, multiple library program, does that mean it's all attendees?
Yes.
In that number? Is there any way to pick out the number of Lake Bluff attendees?
I keep a separate report of that, but it's, and I'm happy to send that to you. It's standard practice to count the total number of attendees at the events, but I always keep a separate, how many Lake Bluff patrons, so that I know, you know, okay, great. Nick Offerman posted this on his Instagram and it went viral, and we had tons of people, but were they people from Lake Bluff who are paying the money that I'm paying out, you know? I want to be sure that. I'm not paying for programs that no one in the community is invested in. Unfortunately, the Illinois libraries presents, if people do have continued interest, they can sign up for it through Lake Forest Library. We just can't advertise it, but if they ask, I can tell them, yes, go sign up through, you know, our neighbor here or there or through the book club. There's a bookstore down in Evanston that's part of it, so they're still accessible, which is nice.
So that that actually does touch on my my second question, which is, are we at the six months of the Illinois library presents?
Yes, it went from January through June.
Okay, got it. And then the other thing, just, you know, looking at how, again, the your city at home, are those attendee figures Lake Bluff only?
No, no, any of the multi-library is going to be the full number, but I do also, your city at home, we may not have Lake Bluff specific. Numbers from, I remember Jill mentioning that statistics with that one was a big issue. We've run into that with a couple of the. Conglomerate whatever programs where they weren't able to provide specific statistics.
I think we have them. I, the question is if we can still access them because it's two years now, but I don't remember those numbers being any higher than ten per program.
Yeah, I would, I would just say if those, if your city at home has not been featured recently in a newsletter, it might be a good time to do it.
It's a program. It's a past program that's not repeating.
Oh, it's not repeating.
For April and May of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, it was, yeah, April, May. Yeah, it was just those two months.
It was one of those great partnerships that we had during during the pandemic.
Thank you for that conversation. I thought it was an ongoing program. Thank you.
Unfortunately not.
It was a really great opportunity because it actually did museums and other kind of entities instead of just author talks. So it was, there were a couple all ages, but the library in charge of it is not repeating it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about the presentation on programming? A lot of great information in here.
Oh, I should clarify the the two highlighted. Yeah, those are both ones that I just missed writing in. I had marked for later. They were both adult programming, and I can send Eric an updated report.
I think the verbal. Verbal update is sufficient. Okay, was well done. Thank you, Anna. Okay. So that's going to take us up to our contract for capital reserves study. So. So, um, a capital reserve study was discussed and approved by the building and grounds committee last year in the fall of 2021. But with additional construction expenses arising, it was decided to forego that project until fiscal year 2223. So the expense was then budgeted for, so this was budgeted for in this current fiscal year. And a professional study of the electrical HVAC and plumbing components of the library to aid in creating a better replacement schedule that would feed into, you know, being able to better budget for those projects continues to be a big need. The contract is updated this summer is actually less than expected. At $5,500, that's about $2,000 less than the quote that we got last year. It reflects reflects a change in partnerships as far as Angberg Anderson and who they are working with. So that is always exciting when you have those unicorn moments where things go down rather than up. The building and grounds committee met, reviewed the new contract and determined that the need is, is still there and recommends the approval of the agreement to the full board. That is my recommendation this evening as well, that the contract of $5,500 with Angberg Anderson for a capital reserves study be approved. Questions?
How long would that take?
It sounds like it could get going pretty quickly and that we would have that document within the next month or two.
Oh, so fairly soon.
Yeah, so that, that would move pretty quick. Any other questions?
And so this gives us, this would give us a report on all the kind of the infrastructure needs.
Yes.
Status report, you know.
It would give us status and it would also give us a recommended replacement schedule.
Okay.
So that we could, you know, gauge that, you know, in five years' time, when we're putting together the budget, that we would have some components that we knew needed to be swapped.
I think that'd be pretty helpful to long-term planning.
Yes. And you know, very, very helpful for building maintenance as well. As, as librarians, we are very confident in our ability to get up to speed on just about any subject. But there's no denying that some of the engineering aspects related to the building, that it is a at times a big mountain to climb in terms of getting up to speed on, on some of those details. So this will be a big help in terms of
Whoever the new director is as well.
Indeed.
Eric, is any of the information that they require from the library hard to get? Such as some of the blueprints and things like that? That they're looking for?
Um, shouldn't be.
Okay.
You know, mostly what they're going to, because it's Angberg Anderson, there, there, there is a little bit of that factored in that, that we've been working with them for a while. So they, they've got a lot of blueprints for the library and the building already. So we don't need to get them as much of that. So kind of gives us a a leg up in terms of working on this with them. And then the, the big part, the big component is going to be then, you know, having the engineers in to take a look and you know, poke around the systems.
Okay.
All good questions. If there aren't any other questions, I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, motion from Janie, second from Bill. Because it is approval of a contract in excess of $5,000, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Are we? Oh. Sorry, I'm getting, getting lost in terms of my screens here. I did Janie and Bonnie. No, I did Jenny and Bonnie. Yeah. Trustee Heinseman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
It's a, it's the evening for weird Zoom things I had for a moment there that it really cut the screen off weird for me. And I had a moment where I thought that we only had three trustees for some reason left in the meeting and I couldn't fathom why that would be. Okay. So the CRS study is, is approved. We'll get that signed. That's one that with the approval of the board I can sign off on and then I'll send that back to Sean and we'll get that moving. Next item up is another one that we had budgeted to do in this fiscal year, and that is the scheduled replacement of the library's firewall server. So this was expected and it was planned for. $15,000 was budgeted for this project in the 2223 budget. The technology committee has been made aware that you know, this is, this is up. It is a fairly standard part of our replacement plan. So I had solicited feedback from the tech committee, provided an opportunity to ask some questions of me regarding this and to kind of see if there was a desire to kick it around a committee a bit. The there were a few good questions from, from the group, but there, there did not seem to be any desire from the tech committee to really dig into this. It's, it's a pretty standard part of the plan. We need firewalls. That is the state of the world. So my recommendation this evening is that we approve the contract with CVI for the $15,290 replacement of the firewall server. That is for the machinery and its installation.
I move to approve the contract with CVI for the firewall replacement in the amount of 15290. I second.
Right. Motion for Bonnie, second from Kathy. Another contract. So we'll do roll call again. Trustee Heinseman.
Bye.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
All right, contract is approved. And this will bring us up to our safe child policy. So our current safe child policy. I should be. Could share down to this here. Our current safe child policy does not, I went too far.
There we go.
Which goes under the heading of unattended children. Really is not particularly well drafted and fails to highlight our, either our strong desire for the youngest children to be safely able to safely use the library with the help of the caregiver or our wish to reunite children with their parents when they get separated. So head of youth services, Eliza Darby took a look at the policy. Really compared it to some others at other area libraries and recommends the attached changes. So I think the the attached update is, is good. I think it covers the essential points without stating in matter of fact language that we shall be calling the DCFS upon you.
Well, I was
stray.
I thought it was really written, Eliza. Thanks for revising it.
Yeah, thank you, Jenny.
So, and of course it does still provide that in a situation where there would be a need to call the police. You know, we might, you know, still need to do that. Though only in egregious situations.
It's just happened. Is this an ongoing problem or has this just started to occur where people expect the library to babysit little ones?
It's not been as much of a problem as it had been in certain years in the past. If you read through the unattended child policy and you imagine, bless her heart, our former head of youth services, Donna Williams, when she really had the bit between her teeth about something. And you can probably see that quite clearly. Donna could really be a force and you know, there, there were a few times in the past where we had that issue where it wasn't people not feeling, people not keeping an eye on their kids, but it was kids being dropped off. And, you know, we're not set up to support that, you know, we're legally, we don't have the authority that other institutions have to act in in parentis locus like schools do where, you know, you drop your kids off and they're basically acting in parental capacity while they're there with authority over the kids. We haven't got that. You know, we don't have the resources to do that. But, you know, it is, I think in part, if you want to look at it in a positive way, it's a testament to how safe people feel the library is. That they can just drop their six-year-old off and they'll be fine.
I'm just going to add to that it's a really standard part of policy. And I was able to find at almost every local library nearby a version of this on the website to compare.
Can I just ask one question? On the very last paragraph, it talks about if a child under the age of 14 has not been picked up, is, is that, that's, it is 14 that we want on there or is that eight?
Um, 14. Okay. The, that one's a little bit older. We, we have had, that's probably been the more active part of this policy over the years. Where we'll have kids say 10 or 11 years old and will be leaving the library at the end of the day and they'll still be kind of hanging around the entrance. And somebody will pick them up. Somebody, you know, forgot to pick them up or, or something and depending on the time of year, you know, that, that can be, you know, a situation where we just don't want to leave, you know, a young unattended person just sitting there with, with no idea when anybody's going to be there to get them.
And we have a
we get into, yeah, particularly if it's really hot, if it's really cold, which because it's Illinois can be often. You know, we, we've got a procedure then that goes with this, as Eliza was noting, where two individuals, two staff members will stay with the person and, you know, wait with, with them for 15 minutes. And then if there isn't a sign of anybody coming, then we'll, you know, then we'll contact the, the authorities so that there's somebody that will be, who's a responsible authority figure that will work with them to, you know, contact who they need to contact, et cetera. The last young person that we needed to work with on this, which was a few years back, was actually very excited about this whole thing, that their mom had just kind of flaked out, forgotten to pick them up and that they got to ride a police car. So it's another, another one of those, you know, it's important that we've got policy and it's important that we've got procedure. It happens sometimes. But
So I have a quick question, if you don't mind. On the third paragraph, somebody else can kick in. It's been a long time since I've been an eight-year-old or a nine-year-old. It looks as though we're asking children over the, so nine years old to leave and then we're letting their parents know. We're assuming that kids, all kids, no matter where they live in the village can just leave and be off on their own. I wouldn't have, could we, would you not call parents and say, you know, so-and-so's been asked to leave and then the parents could figure out if the kid can walk home or not? I mean.
I mean, it's kind of circumstantial depending on how the kid arrived at the library, which is why it's not covered in the policy.
Okay. So you'd, you'd look into that and you wouldn't just.
Yeah, yes. I mean, the policy is really the, the most cut and dry neutral version of this. We have procedure galore for all of these scenarios, but.
I just can see the wrong parent reading this and going ballistic, but I'm sure, and that's probably the kid that would be acting up anyway. But I'm sure you've thought this through A to Z. So.
The, we do have a lot of kids in the community over the age of eight that will come in, ride their bikes in or walk over. So, you know, in, in fact, that, that's, you know, for the Montessori school down the street, that's a big part of just the education process there is that where their library, they send kids down here in patches. Once they're over that mark.
Could I ask a question about the first paragraph? I just noticed that the language changed from parent guardian or caregiver to just parent guardian. I didn't know, like a parent or guardian is never going to be 14 years old. So I wasn't sure if that, what, what the intention was.
I'm using guardian in the more general term, not as in the legal guardians. That guardian covers caregiver, babysitter and legal guardian. I thought that would be more inclusive.
Cool.
So that's a question, Anna?
Yeah, yeah. As long as it can apply broader than legal guardian, then we're good.
Okay. Other questions related to the proposed policy revision? If there aren't any further questions, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I assume.
Motion from Kathy. Do we have a second?
John?
Jill, I think.
Okay.
I think that was an echo. I'm getting an echo of myself.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
Second from John.
It was John. Okay.
For this, we can do a voice vote. All in favor of approval of the revised safe child policy?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Hearing no opposition or abstention, policy is approved. Okay. And Kathy, did you want to do the director's report before?
Yes, let's do that then.
Do you want to skip old business here?
Oh, well, we can jump in on old business. We were kind of talking around it at the start. The update on the capital project update slash coordinators report. Well, the, the news is that the in a kind of confusing turn of events that the museum has stated that they do not want to proceed with the acquisition of the museum building. So that is where that stands at this point. You know, obviously it would be an awkward campaign to be running. Even if we wanted to, if we wanted to still try and run with a campaign, kind of need the museums collaboration there somewhat to avoid a weird scenario where we're raising funds to send them somewhere. So that is the depressing update on, on that subject. Wish I had otherwise to report. Really had thought that we had a good chance of moving this forward and I continue to feel that we do. Continue to feel that this is a you know, golden apple just sitting on the table waiting for us to take it.
Agreed.
And if only we knew someone who was on the inside.
Who would that be?
I'm going to see what I can find out.
You know, and I, I would be happy to, you know, if it would be helpful that to have me say a few words or present anything, I'd be always, I'm always happy to do that. Um, my, my general sense has been the museum generally does not want me there. That they generally do not want library there. Uh, for the most part, so, uh, but the offer stands.
Sometimes I get that
to get in there and be like rah rah, expand the museum. Let's get her done. Any questions on, on that? Okay. Uh, well, that's going to hop us down to the the librarian's, uh, narrative report. Uh, I want to reiterate what I said earlier in the meeting. It, it really has been an honor, uh, being the director of the Lake Bluff Library. Uh, I've loved my time here. It truly, um, did require a, um, very unique opportunity, um, to get me away from from working here at the Lake Bluff Library. And what is, uh, probably, you know, a, a once in a lifetime chance to be the director at the library that, uh, uh, really inspired me as a kid to get into libraries as an adult. So, um, got a bright future ahead here at the library of a fantastic staff. And working hard to make sure that the handoff is as smooth as it could possibly be. Uh, I am genuine in terms of the encouragement to use me as a resource, call me, text me, uh, send me emails. Uh, I consider it an important benchmark for a professional in a response, in a position of public responsibility that, uh, things are left in good condition. That as someone in that position that I should not scoot out the door, um, or coast to the end, but that I will work hard until that finishing point. And, um, will remain a resource thereafter. Because I believe that that is very important.
Thank you so much, Eric. We're going to miss you.
You're here.
Miss you, Janie. Miss everybody. I'm serious though. It's a beautiful area up there. Lake House, maybe. We've got lots of lakes. They're beautiful. They're a beautiful green because there's, um, this Marl bottom that we have going on. So it's almost kind of like a tropical kind of feel to them. I mean visually, of course, still Northern Wisconsin. So, I mean, you put your feet in, the, the tropic thing isn't going to happen for you, but okay. Uh, the only other item that I wanted to highlight for the director's report is to draw particular attention on the statistics. And unfortunately, why I'm drawing particular attention on the statistics is that we have a known bug that is presently happening in Springshire, uh, which we use to gather together our statistical information and that is causing things to not add up correctly. Uh, in all, um, areas on there. So, um, in looking at the, taking a glance at the numbers. Get myself to the right portion of the statistics page. Uh, you may have looked at the final numbers as far as circulation totals and thought, well, 7,397, that's pretty miserable for a summer month. And indeed it would be if that actually accurately reflected the totals of the numbers to its left, which it does not. The actual total is, uh, 9,200, um, and a few checkouts, uh, past that. Which is right about where we were this, um, month in 2019. So, uh, not really up or down, but, um, you know, not the sort of slump that the total number there, uh, at just a glance suggests, uh, that maybe we experienced. So, you know, we've communicated to, uh, the folks who maintain the software about that. Yeah. Anna has done that and, uh, they have stated that it is a known bug. Uh, and that they are working on, um, on effects. So hopefully that will not be long in coming. Otherwise you can look forward to more updates from, uh, the interim director, um, in the, in the future as to no, no, we're actually doing fine. Regarding the statistics reports.
Well, if we, I can't do the numbers here in front of me, but if, is this bug affecting, how far back does it go?
Well, it looks, it looks like it's that, um, it's the fourth column down. That number is not being added into the, the final numbers. So that 2024 is not, if you put the 2024 in, I think that's where you get your 9,000 numbers, Eric.
Yes, it broke, um, early in June. So after we had added the Sierra circulation, but before I had the digital circulation, which is that 2024. And it is still broken. I just double checked that. They said that it's something they have to actually build a patch to fix and there is not a projected release date for that. But the, on the upside, the only thing it's affecting is automatic totaling. It's still saving all the data. It's all there. It's just, I have to do math.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any questions on the statistics or anything else in the director's report?
Yeah, I did have one quick question.
Fire away.
It may not be, it may not be question for you, but for one of the team. Were there really 60 programs in June? 60 total library programs? It's in the, it's in the charts. I, this is where I picked it up.
Bonnie, you can't hear me laughing because I was muted, but, uh, yeah, that sounds pretty accurate.
It feels pretty accurate.
Wow.
It helps if you keep in mind that the definition for the programming does include the passive programming as well. So there's a lot of active programs in there. We're very active with our programming in the summer. But the things where people are coming in and doing crafts, uh, participating in, uh, contests and games, you know, those qualify um, as, as passive programs, uh, and get included in the larger number.
Well, um,
we're, we're very busy in the summer.
60 is the total active. So maybe I need
the total active? Okay. Doesn't surprise me. So it doesn't surprise me.
Between, you know, we added two programs every Friday because of book bike and, um, storytime and all of that. So, uh, but I'll take a, another look because that does seem.
Says at the bottom that we had eight passive and 60 active.
Yeah, that might make sense because the eight is mostly grab and go, but I'll double check on that.
Anna will give it a poke. If there's anything hinky about it, we'll let you know.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's, um, it's amazing. Um, and I guess the other thing I would quickly comment on from the report is just congrats on the second place finish from the Fourth of July parade for the float for our, the entry. It was, it did look great. Uh, and Jenny, I saw you in particular because you were on my side of the street, if you will, when you walked down. Yeah, it was, it was great. And, um, you know, people really liked the, the bike as being part of our entry as well. So job well done. Thanks to everyone who was able to march during the parade.
And thank you, Jillian. It was a great idea. The backpacks and everything.
Very much so.
Nice.
Thank you.
All right. So I think that's going to take us through the, uh, through the all non-executive session portions of the meeting tonight. Shall we? Is there anything that we want to, we want to cover before we jump into our interim director slash hiring discussion and executive session?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then thanks to all members of the public and all members of the staff that are present this evening. You all for being here. We're headed for executive session, uh, which is a board only. Or for that discussion. That's Martha, Jillian, Anna, Katie. Thank you all for being here. Um, if you want to hop in for the adjournment, I will post in Slack when we leave executive session. Okay. Uh, so to go to executive session, um, we will need a motion. And that will be uh, going into executive session to discuss the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body in compliance with the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 dash 2C1.
I so moved.
Bonnie?
It was Kathy, but I'll second. Why not?
All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
All right. Any opposed? Was that a belated I? Jenny?
Well.
Okay. Um, so we are headed to executive session at 8:26 PM. We have left executive session at 8:54 PM. So, um, as discussed in executive session, what was discussed was offering the, um, interim position, um, position to staff member Katie Horner with a compensation of $2,000 per month for the tenure of however long she would serve in that capacity. If that is agreed, then, um, do I have a motion?
A move.
Motion from John. Do we have a second?
Kathy was actually on mute. I saw her.
I so moved.
Okay.
Okay. John, you'll second then. Okay. Motion from Kathy, second from John. Uh, we'll do our final roll call vote for the evening. Uh, trustee Heinselman.
Bye.
Trusty Church.
Hi.
Trusty Hayes.
Hi.
Trusty Graziano.
Hi.
Trusty Shaw.
Hi.
Trusty Meyerhoff.
Hi.
All right. Motion is approved. I will draft the letter and I will share that before I, um, send that. So for the HR committee members, you can take a quick peek at that before I deliver that.
Thank you.
No problem. And do we have any other business before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
We were going to schedule an HR meeting.
Yes. Um, I was hoping to do that post adjournment so that I could stop the recording first.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion from Bonnie, second from Bill, all in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.